Few items on the revision of agenda, mostly under HR and also a group of additions to donations. Public recognition, we have a number of donations. It is always a privilege and just great to see all this. The first one being a recommendation approved $4,000 donation from M. Mac, which is a matching grant from a division of Purdue University. That'll be for Shark Creek Robotics. Recommendation also, $500 donation from Callan Born for Shark Creek Robotics. We have a $200 donation from Manchester Farm Family Dentistry for Shark Creek Robotics. Recommendation to approve a $1,000 donation from Renbarger Farms for Shark Creek Robotics. Another $1,000 donation from Poet for Shark Creek Robotics. And another $1,000 donation from Zoomers for Shark Creek Robotics. It's fantastic. Then we have a recommendation to prove a donation of a mobile whiteboard valued at $276.89 from via a credit union. That'll be for White's Junior Senior High School. And we have a $1,933.80 donation from Harmon Photography for Southwood Elementary staff or students. And finally, we have a recommendation to prove a $1,950 donation from Edson Bulldozing, $500. Grand Staff Candy and Funeral Service, $500. Wabash Veterinary Hospital LLC, $500. Stein Tire, $150. Gaunt &amp; Sons, $150. Hoffman Nursery, $150. And all of this will be for Northfield High School for the county tournament. So that's just great.
I'm going to approve all those great donations.
Rushing second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
School recognition, staff hands.
We'll start tonight with Shark Creek Elementary. And I do want to say that as we go into the schools and walk around, we see some different things going on. And I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to see Shark Creek and their news team. Mrs. Schaefer kind of shared that with me. And so I thought, you know, that would be good to show a little bit of what they do with the technology, what they do with their literacy and just communication skills. And so we have some students here tonight. And we appreciate Mr. Martin being here as principal. And Mrs. Schaefer, I'll let you introduce the students. And I don't know if you're going to talk any, but anybody that's going to talk, I want you to put over here in the corner so we can have you on video. And then once we do the actual newscast that you did, we'll put that on the screen. So students, Mrs. Schaefer. All four of you.
All four of us. We have accrued seven students. And I'm Mrs. Schaefer. And since I do the literature and like all the language arts, one of my jobs or part of my job is to let my kids be the ones who are showing maybe strong abilities in the language arts to become a newspaper crew. Well, as we all know, the newspaper, reading it, there's not as much around as it used to be. So when I got these guys, we kind of sat down and said, what ideas do you have? I had some going on in my head, which is pretty typical. But I asked these guys, what would you like to do? And they weren't excited at all about typing a bunch of news articles. So I said, well, what are your ideas? Can we have a news show? So that's what they have done. So tonight, Alex said we have seven, so I have four of them here. And I know they're all so busy. So this is McGuire, Lydia, Sophia, and James. And they take their time out of our Morse time, which is kind of our intervention. They, at the end of language or end of reading, can we, and it may be five or 10 minutes. And they are off on their own coming up with all kinds of projects. They surprise me every month. We're working on technical difficulties because we're learning. And so, but they are so excited. They're just so much fun. And I'm going to let them show you the video.
Is there anything to say before you tell them what you're going to say?
So basically, we started the new show. And it first started off like really small and not like, just like the main stuff part of the like school, like sports and like lunch for lunch and stuff like that. But then we started adding like some more funny stuff to it to make it more enjoyable for the kids.
And they went, instead of just doing what's going on in sixth grade, they had now incorporated everything from third grade. So now we've done picture, the parents are sending us videos and pictures of this different sports. We've got football. We had some volleyball stuff. They added a America's Got Talent. They do a wacky, well, one was a Wacky Wednesday or something. And it's, I never know what they're thinking about. I'm not all sure what all you're going to see tonight, but they are amazing.
You go ahead and, I let you have the screen. So we did practice, not really practice, but was working, so.
And due to the time we kind of ordered it at the last moment, it was up to 10 minutes. I wonder who did that.
Hi, McGuire.
Lydia.
And where is he at?
Mr. Ryan. Well, I teach at Great Science and Social Studies.
And what college is he at?
Purdue and I P F F and Florida.
What do you want to do here?
A lot of the, you know, working animals, working animals, like tickers, brought to the house.
Have you ever done anything fun in this building?
You look like pizza, count anything to put a lot of ranch. No, I like ranch.
Wait, where are you going to do? And we're, and today we have to do a, we have to know what last day. She's in the hall, yeah, two or three minutes. I will. Yes. Also respond, run a little bit or a little bit. Be quiet, I'm telling you, don't, I'm scared. Are you doing fun? Uh, I don't know about one. Uh, you just, you might start with her, didn't know. You're not over there saying, wait, I'm a student.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Is she going to dump you?
I actually get to alley-oop it. I get to alley-oop it.
Nice.
Hello, this is Mr. Ryan from the program. I'm interviewing, right by the house. Um, what's your grade?
Third.
Um, what's your homework?
It's calculus.
Um, so what are you guys doing for him?
Uh, things good. Uh, no, I'm teaching my English.
Um, what's your favorite food? This is Washington restaurant, you couldn't miss.
Very good. Well, bloopers. Very good.
Nice job.
Anybody else want to say anything? Just your chance. And if you don't, all right. It's nice of you to be here.
Thank you, parents and parents for bringing them here. So show a little bit of the talent that we have there at Shark Creek.
Including a teacher who will throw it out to them and let them go with it. And I like that they took up that challenge.
All right, well, you're welcome to stay. But you are dismissed if you'd like to go at this time, so. So Lydia, I think I should be able to get back to make sure I can still get on without, you might have to release it because now I got back. Okay. There we go. All right, we're good. Thanks a lot for coming.
Sorry, I wasn't really.
That's what usually happens.
I know, she's still walking you.
Yeah, she gets stopped. So I have a couple of other things here I'd like to share that was given to me. First of all, from Southwood, congratulations to Ryan Dieter, who earned the 2023 I D A T C C C Boys Cross Country Academic All-State Honorable Mention. Nominees must be a junior or senior with a minimum grade point average of 3.5 on a four-point scale, recognized as varsity athlete on the sectional roster and achieved a minimum SAT of 1,200 or ACT composite of 26 or PSAT of 1140 if a junior athlete. So congratulations to Ryan. And then also congratulations to Kayden Johnson, trumpet, for making the Indiana Hall Region Honor Band. He performed Sunday, November 12th at Marin High School. Congratulations to Kaylee Nelson Flute and Kenzie Warman, Miss Clef Clarinet, who made Indiana Hall District Honor Band. Kaylee and Kenzie will perform on Sunday, November 19th at Plymouth High School. So it's good to see all the different talents that we have, whether it's academic, whether it's fine arts, whether it's marketing with their news, news channel there that they did, it was excellent. We did have on our agenda Matt Driscoll. We were going to share a little bit about information. And I'm going to go ahead and share it today. And we're going to do it again when he's here. Originally, he was going to be here and then he didn't know for sure. And then, of course, obviously, he's not here. But don't tell him that we did this, but just give you a little bit of information. He has been here as a school board member for 25 years. He has endured so far four superintendents. And he also has endured, I better not say it this way, 16 different board members over those years and then three attorneys. So yeah, I put that in there too. Plus a lot of other things too, I'm sure. So anyway, we want to recognize him for that. And we will do that again though, while he's here. So, but I did a little research on that to see what's happened in the last 25 years. Probably should do some more research, find out how much money we spent approved over the last 25 years. That would be very interesting. So I believe that is all I have for recognitions of students and staff and board members.
All right, thank you. Any public comment on the agenda items? If not, on the motion to approve minutes, if you've had an opportunity to review.
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of financial recourse claims first. Chris, the one I'm trying to just pull up memory here. There was one for Bart &amp; Co. Bill. Was that the expenses on the drawings or for their locker rooms and all that?
Yeah, so they send us some of their statements based off of that work that they've done for us beyond even just architect drawings. Because they go, they do, they help us to bid processes and all that stuff.
And the writing of the contracts.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and then another one I noticed in there about the roof in Southwood Elementary. Is that completed now?
The roof is done. We still have one payment left. And so the payments go through Bart &amp; Co. They make sure that the work has been completed and you may send us that. But we have had our final walkthroughs on all that stuff. And Steve has met with the roofers. And so they, they are done with that work at the elementary.
Yeah, I'm glad they got it finished now.
I don't have any questions. I need to approve claims.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Payroll?
Nothing really to touch base on payroll. There's two pays in there, pay seven, pay eight for the month of October. The October 31st pay, there's not much difference in between the two payrolls, but I just wanted to bring a point to teacher negotiations and contracts. The October, the payroll eight for October 31st, we did the retro pay for the health insurance portion. That was increased in the benefit according to the teacher contract. And then the next pay, payroll nine for November 15th, that will reflect the retro pay for the salaries. So you'll see a much bigger difference from payroll eight to payroll nine because of that retro pay to catch us back up from August, August 30th, which would have been our first pay of the new year. So just kind of give you a heads up on that. That will also start including some of our ECA payments too. So you will see a significant difference. And that is why, so.
See the extra money? He's good headed into the holidays.
Sure.
Motion for payroll?
Make a motion to approve payroll. Second.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that moves us right on to personnel recommendations. Oh, wait, we are up selling.
Yeah, it's just the end of month summary. Nothing out of the ordinary for that. I believe I mentioned this already, but I don't remember. We did receive our bond money from the 2023 bond that we took out. A portion of that goes to US Bank. And a portion of that came directly to us. And so you'll see that number reflected in there, what portion came to us. And we will spend the money at the US Bank first as we do these projects with the locker rooms and so forth. And then that will go into the start spending the money that we have on hand for anything that we continue to do beyond that with the tennis courts, etc.
Any questions on that? All right, human resource report. Resignations, we have Karen Rinbarger, speech and language pathologist, WMAP. Jason Hayden, classroom instructor, White's High School. Amanda Snyder, teacher coach, Southwood High School. David Snyder, varsity football coach at Southwood High School. Amanda Stevenson Cook, Southwood High School. Carlos Delgado, paraprofessional, Northfield High School. Employment Dakota Pelfrey, custodian, Shark Creek. Donna Millsfall, paraprofessional, Northfield High School. Desiree Hendridge, paraprofessional, Metro North. Aniva Kennedy, paraprofessional, Southwood Elementary. Deborah Daystrom, classroom instructor for White's High School. Those are under employment. And I believe we have coaches. Oh, one more, Melissa Brooks, a cook, Southwood High School. Winner coaches for Northfield. Faith Lemming, fifth grade girls' basketball. Jenny Wilson, volunteer, fifth grade basketball, girls. Jared Brooks, assistant wrestling. Spencer Miller, volunteer assistant wrestling. Sherman Gray, swimming. Winner coaches for Southwood. Ryan Sweet, assisting in wrestling. Sarah Treska, interim varsity chair. Brittany Blocker, JV chair. Danielle Schoenfield, junior high cheer. Scott Deaton, sixth grade boys' basketball. Ryan Smith, sixth grade boys' basketball also. Herb Carter, sixth grade boys' basketball. And then one retirement, Lynetta Good, cook, Northfield High School.
I'm going to approve HR.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
And I do want to say Dan and Dave Snyder, they were on resignation. They actually retired once, and so they're not under the retirement. But again, we appreciate all their services throughout the many, many years that they've coached. And also a PE teacher with Mr. Dan Snyder. And also Lynette Good, I just appreciate, she's been at Northfield for many, many years also. And so just, you can see that she'll go through the end of this semester, but then she'll be retiring. So we appreciate Lynette. All she's done at Northfield is a cook, because she's been there for several years.
Hate to lose quality people, but they're definitely placing quality people. Reports, Harton Career Center, Matt Snyder here, so superintendent's report.
Yeah, I could have said this under recognitions, but just one again. We have had a board meeting since we had the state championship with Southwood Volley Knights. So just a congratulations to them. And also, of course, Coach Tom Pinnacle for the volleyball, Paul Fain. Just great achievements with the team, with the coaches, with all the fans that go along. And also, you know, the last couple of years, there's been a lot of plays that they've been putting on at Southwood, which includes both Northfield and Southwood. The play Little Mermaid was also excellent. They, you know, we hold about 484 seats in those auditoriums. Friday night was fairly full, not all the way full, but fairly full. And Saturday and Sunday were pretty typical too. So a lot of people watching those, a lot of people helping with that, parents. And then, of course, Lindsay Nias, the director, fundraisers to make sure it all happens too. And so it's just been a really good thing for our schools to be able to be a part of that. And so just appreciate all the, like I said before, the fine arts and the athletics and all the academics that are happening in our schools. That's one.
Great. Mr. Gray. Other items of new business, the first one is approval of the 24-25 MSD district calendar.
Okay, let me just explain this a little bit. It's really very typical of what this calendar, what our current calendar is for 23-24. One thing that we are changing is the actual spring break. If you notice, our typical spring break is the first full week in April. And that would be the 7th through the 11th. That gets really a lot later. What happens is too, on the 14th, the DOE has not officially said this, but our I-Learn will be starting the 14th. And so to get back into the groove of school, us along with most of the schools in the Heartland Career Center, the five school districts, and also Wobba Swininga program are considering this same spring break, which actually would start on Friday, the 28th of March, and then run through April 4th. So everything else is really very, very similar. You can see that the starting is a little bit earlier just because of the calendar. If you know next year, 2024, it's a leap year, so we skip two days instead of one day. And so because of the extra day. And so it looks like it's a little earlier, but it's still about that same corresponding time. When we talk about calendars, we have different assumptions of when the breaks are, when we want to end. And so there's not a lot of lead way of doing that. There are a couple of items I put at the end and just want to mention those two. Calendar days will be made up, cancel days on calendar, can't read a code. Cancel days will be made up by e-learning, whether it's asynchronous or synchronous and/or using makeup days depending on when canceled. There are no makeup days in there, but we know that we have to wait on the 1003 flexibility waiver. And we don't know about that yet. So that's why we put all these caveats into the calendar. So hopefully I won't have to come back to you and make a change, but that's a possibility the way things have happened the last few years. So I would ask that you approve this. We are looking at doing commencement again. This would be on June 1st, Southwood and Northfield. We switched the times, but we are already scheduled to be at the fourth theater. So have a lot of great comments about that. And so we will continue that tradition. Can we just do that when we talk about the next one too? Or are you going to do one at a time about White's calendar? So the White's calendar, you know, it's a lot different mainly in that they don't go on Fridays, but they start not that much earlier. But then, of course, they go all the way, you can see through June. And there are some more of what we call the non-traditional day schedule in July to get their 180 days. One thing that has changed this year though is, and you can see, they have not had the fall break because it just didn't work out. But they made it, they have a fall break with a couple of extra days. They don't have school on Friday anyway, but they would have a three-day fall break instead of a five-day fall break. But it still equals up to the 180 days. So I would ask, and of course, they have the same spring break, they have the same Christmas break. So I, I would ask, and of course they have the same spring break, they have the same Christmas break, things like that. So, but it's definitely a lot different situation than our traditional schools. So.
The reason for not having school Fridays so they can travel home?
Well, the real reason is so we can spread out the, the school year because what was happening a long time ago when this first started was that they would be done in May, like our traditional schools. They would be there July, I mean, they'd be there June and July without earning any credits. And since the students are there really more of an average of five or six months, they were losing a lot of time. So that's basically why we went to the four-day and that started now, it's really kind of unbelievable, but that started in the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve school year. Because that was my last, almost first last year there because I actually started there with that whole program of going to four days. And then, and that's when I transferred to Northfield in September of that year, twenty-eleven, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve school year. It's hard to believe it's been that many years ago that we've done that, but we've done that for many, many years. But it also allows for different kinds of appointments that happen on Friday. And if they do have a home pass, that they can go home pass on that time too. A lot of them don't necessarily have home passes either, but that will give them an extra day also. They have a hundred and eighty days too, it's a public school, just like the rest of them.
All right, so we'll group item one and two together, MSD district calendar and the White's Junior, Senior High School calendar for approval.
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Recommendation to approve the transfer of the Sharp Creek Elementary School, sixth grade students and staff to transition to Northfield Junior Senior High School, that'll be starting in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year.
Yeah, so I don't have any documents for you, but I will tell you that we've been talking about this for several, several months. Starting first with administration at both schools, then speaking to the staffs that would be affected most at both Northfield and Sharp Creek. Then both of, all of the staffs were welcome to come to any of the meetings. And then we had a parent meeting and we also had a student meeting. So we have met with, with all of the different people, just like the same procedure that we did with Southwood. This is the second year Southwood students, sixth grade students have been at Southwood Junior Senior High School and that has been going very, very well. And of course with our plan to do the addition with three through five, it just made sense that we go ahead and move them to have that transition completed. So we don't have to do two different types of transitions. So that transition will be completed when we actually get done with all the building for grades three through five. There is room, Mr. Snyder, when we had the meeting with the parents, we also took a tour to show where they're going to be. And so if you can kind of picture the west side of the building more to the north, that entryway. Those classrooms will be the first one on the right going to the hallway as you're going to the east and then the other two on the back hallway on the west. So they'll all be really close there. Drop-offs could be easily right there too to get one to the classroom. So working on the same procedures as far as looking at scheduling and all the different things that happen there. So really appreciate Northfield and Sharp Creek for their comments, suggestions, questions, to be able to make this work for next school year. So I'd ask that you approve this. Through the Department of Education, this school board does have to approve a transition like this. And then we would actually change it so sixth grade is actually at Northfield.
I move to approve the transfer of sixth grade Sharp Creek to Northfield. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the transfer. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item four, recommendation to approve Shawnee Construction for the high school locker room renovation project.
Yeah, I want to do the next page. So we had our bid openings last week for our locker room renovation project at both Northfield and Southwood. We had a budget to begin with of about five point two million dollars. Again, that's to do both Northfield and Southwood High Schools. Base bids came in very favorable. We had two bidders, Yoder Construction and Shawnee Construction Engineering. The base bid was really the, the focus on the area of the locker rooms and coaches offices in the east gym area and the area that connects to the main gym area. The alternative was an option to look at extending the weight room south into the locker room that is currently there. And then that locker room would kind of move into where the old boys' PE locker room was. Alternate two was to replace all of the doors that go into those gyms at both Northfield and Southwood. So these would be like if you were walking from the concession stand into the gym, it would be replacing all of those doors going into the main gym and all those doors going into the east gym. And then alternate bid three was replacing some electrical panels and wiring in that electrical room that sits back in the east gym, kind of where the storage area is. Then the fourth alternate bid was then to replace all of the lockers, existing lockers in those old areas that were being renovated with new lockers. And updating those.
So come the football locker room?
No, we're not doing anything with those locker rooms back in that area. So all of this is in relation to the east gym and like the connector to the west gym, those areas. The only change now with the locker rooms is extending that weight room south into that locker room. So Shawnee had the lowest bid at four point three million dollars to do all of those alternates. Except for alternate bid four, we decided to remove that and do that on our own because we feel like we can get a fair price with a special type of lockers through a cooperative, a purchasing cooperative. The bore lockers are your standard athletic lockers. We like that product, we have some of that product already in some of our locker room areas. And so we feel like we can get a fair price equal to comparability from what was presented with the bid choices or options. And then the other component of that is now that we are doing, or would look at doing the weight room, then we would need to add flooring and equipment for that. And I kind of put some estimates on there in your packet, I don't know why it doesn't show up on the screen. But the Shawnee total bid would be four point three million dollars. Looking at doing the locker through the purchasing co-op would range between a hundred fifty to a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And then looking at doing the weight room flooring and equipment for both of the locker rooms would be combined two hundred seventy-five to three hundred fifty thousand dollar cost. Still keeping us under our budget of five point two million dollars.
There was some discussion on scaling back the number of locker. Did that happen?
Yes, so basically what we're doing is we're moving the four, we're moving the, moving, creating four locker room spaces within that middle locker room area. And so we could do that by, one, eliminating a lot of the shower bathroom spaces that were unused in those areas as well as reducing a little bit of our locker, locker footprint per se because we don't have as big of classes, as big of teams. We'll have plenty of lockers in those spaces, but we don't need as many as what we've had currently in those areas, so.
No, I agree with that thinking. Some fellows want windows in the weight room, did that ever happen?
There will be some weight rooms in the hall, or windows in the hallway looking in. And then I believe there is designed to put some windows, not that you can look out outside, but just bring some lighting from the outside. Natural, natural lighting and that.
But if they jump high enough, I think they'll look, I mean, once they get bigger, faster, stronger, they'll be the jump one.
I know the comment was made about baseballs, but it's all, you just need to have a sense of spaciousness of, I don't know, I'm not fond of. That's what it is.
Well, I mean, the locker room is obviously very small as it is now. Extending it will give us some space, it's not going to be massive by any means, but it'd give us a little more space to do some other things in the locker, in the weight room.
Yeah, so that, that moves Southwood a little bit.
Yeah. Plus it makes it a little safer when there's more space and everything's not crammed on top of each other.
Now, this is just kidding and speaking, I shouldn't say this in public meeting, but that track.
Upstairs?
Yeah.
It needs work.
Causes darkness, it's just.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how much it's used, I know some people say it's used, but.
Well, so, okay, so with this locker room, will they take all of that stuff that's up on the track down into the locker? That's, that's an accident, that's all, I mean.
Yeah.
Because when they do run around there, you know, you can't, you want, want to know why, so I was wondering if we were creating enough space to take that stuff down.
We won't have any, we won't bring any machine equipment down, it'll still be a free weights area.
The machines aren't used a lot, right? I mean, we all have the back.
Some sports may use them more than others. I don't know from a PE classroom standpoint how much they really use those.
Those free weights, they're the big thing.
Yeah. So with all that said and done, I guess we ask that you would accept that recommendation to.
Any idea, any idea on construction time start?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have our first construction, pre-construction meeting next week and we'll lay that out about when we can get started. I think initially everybody would like to get started as soon as we can, so hopefully in December, I think.
So how, how will they be able to demo and do all that stuff without, you know, you're going into winter, prime winter time sports?
So that'll be a discussion that we'll have as far as phasing the areas.
I didn't know if that had been discussed.
We, we've laid out a little bit, but obviously we haven't met with the vendors to see what, what we can do with them as part, as part of that phasing. But there will be phasing aspects of it that will have to obviously absorb some space and have to move that space and use another area.
And like when we did with the carpet and the paint, you know, we had to move classrooms and things like that because of the time it took, so. There'll be some creative ideas to make it work.
But we also want to be able to give them enough space to work so they can get stuff done in a timely manner without preventing us to be able to do what we need to do on the school and athletic side.
Your concern, Scott, would be the use of the auxiliary gym for basketball, right? Because everything borders that a lot.
I'm just thinking, stuff's going to get shoved in the most spaces, you know, equipment and all that kind of stuff.
We'll have, I mean, they'll still be able to use the east gym space as far as events and activities and practices and so forth. One of the things that we have talked about was we would probably build a, a temporary wall there so that they can come in and out of a space without getting into all of this space.
Northfield's first county attorney.
So it'll be in January, they will start until January.
Yeah.
I just was like.
So we would start at Southwood first, start that demo there and then they would, once county attorney's over, then they would be able to be in the vast space.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to board policies, we have three of them for second reading tonight, which means that we go ahead and vote, correct?
Correct.
My third piece together too, if it's all right. The first one's a replacement of policy and is still number thirty-one sixty, has new criminal history checks. Second one would be new board policy thirty-one sixty-five, also dealing criminal history checks of applicants and contractors. And then the third one is a replacement of board policy fifty thirty-five, which is, has to address challenges to library, media and other supplementary materials, so.
And just to make a comment on all of these, the reason for the new or replaced policies are new legislation. And I know that school attorney Patriniu and I, we've been working especially on the criminal history checks to learn a little bit more about those and agreement that these are, the right wants to be recommended and I ask that you approve those. If you have questions first, you can ask, obviously.
I moved through those last time. I move to approve policy, more policy number thirty-one sixty, thirty-one sixty-five and fifty thirty-five. Second.
Motion for second for approval, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anything in public comment? Items on board? And if not, we adjourn.
Six fifty-one.